Justin, could you please give the invocation this evening?
Well, Madam Mayor, Council, everyone, good evening. I know that Thanksgiving is still a few days away and work remains, but for tonight's prayer, I gathered from national proclamations that set aside today for thanks from Congress, from presidents and governors. It was plain to see in these proclamations that in war and peace, in difficult and prosperous years, in times of great change or relative status quo, our leaders have encouraged us to express our thanks to Almighty God. This opening prayer specifically draws on some of those words, so would you please pray with me? God, our Maker and Ruler and Author of all the blessings of this life, we humbly thank you tonight and throughout this week that has set aside for thanks. When we consider the catastrophes that afflict so many other nations, we see how the present condition of these United States provides more than enough reason for our comfort and satisfaction. We so constantly enjoy your blessings that we are prone to forget the source from which they come. So we acknowledge now that no human counsel has designed, no mortal hand worked out, your gracious gifts that we receive from your hand alone. So we thank you for your blessings, and in this chamber of government tonight, we thank you for our form of government, which provides the ground for our unity and prosperity and establishes liberty with order, for the preservation of peace, foreign and domestic, and for the councils that move toward that peace, for lawful and just authorities that suppress and discourage evil and promote what is good, for citizens that look to each other with respect and dignity, and for the prosperity that comes from our work and for your blessings on our community and our homes. And we humbly ask you, the Author of all such blessings, to graciously allow them to continue, and we ask you to imprint gratitude on our hearts, a deep sense of what we owe you for your goodness to us, preserve us from the arrogance of success and prosperity and from the abuse of what we have received. May all that we have received lead us to be a generous people, freely giving to others. And finally, for this council's work tonight, grant them the understanding and ability to make right choices, just decisions, that would bring about a true love of neighbor and the prosperity and safety of our community. We acknowledge that these things are in your hand to give, and so I ask in the name of Christ the Savior, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Justin. So now we will officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Here.
Simmons.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Stacy is absent. Shadle.
Here.
Sanders.
Here.
And Sellers. We have a quorum.
Thank you. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Monroe.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Shadle. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is approval over the minutes from the regular meeting on November 6, 2023. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments? We have several that are signed in. According to our ordinance, per topic is a limit of six, so I will take the first six on the topic that there seems to be a majority that are sitting here for. And as I call your name, if you could please go to the podium, and then you'll have three minutes. The first one is item number 10 with the clerk receiving an email.
The email is from Eric Quick. Good evening. I want to further clarify my concerns about the paid leave ordinance put forth by the city. The city is free to retain its current paid leave policies regardless of what the state act is saying, since they presently offer more paid leave. The only thing the act is mandating is one hour accrued leave per 40 hours of work up to 40 hours annually. I'm not buying the claim made at the last cow that employees would be able to take their leave without notice, and neither should you. The following is taken directly from the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. It thoroughly addresses the concern about how employees can take their paid leave. It states, H. Paid leave under this act shall be provided upon the oral or written request of an employee in accordance with the employer's reasonable paid leave policy notification requirements, which may include the following. One, if use of paid leave under the act is foreseeable and the employer may require the employee to provide seven calendar days' notice before the date leave is to begin. Two, if paid leave under this act is not foreseeable, the employee shall provide such notice as soon as practicable after the employee is aware of the necessity of the leave. An employer that requires notice of paid leave under this act when the leave is not foreseeable shall provide a written policy that contains procedures for the employee to provide notice. Three, employers shall provide employees with written notice of the paid leave policy notification requirements in this section in the manner provided in Section 20 for notice and posting and within five calendar days of any change to the employer's reasonable paid leave policy notification requirements. Four, an employer may not require as a condition of providing paid leave under the act that the employee search for or find a replacement worker to cover the hours during which the employee takes paid leave. My concern is that the wording of the city's ordinance leaves them free to change the amount of paid leave to as little as one day, simply by changing what is stated in the handbook. Alder Person's, city employees and citizens are having the wool pulled over their eyes by the city for reasons that seem irrational, especially since everything they state as reasons for this ordinance is debunked when you take time to actually read the Paid Leave for All Workers Act. The city should enact an ordinance explicitly protecting the two-week paid leave that they currently offer city employees rather than the one currently in front of you that removes them from accountability. Please read the state's act for yourselves and see why the city's proposed paid leave ordinance, as currently written, is not just a poor choice but also unlawful and potentially detrimental to city employees. Eric Quick, First Ward.
And next on the list is Devin Milkie.
I own a business in downtown. Been a GFP member since 2019. It was brought to our attention that we're losing a lot of their budget, which now sounds in talk with city to get more. Still not the full amount. I would like to see that increase to their full funding. You know, there's a lot we've done through the years, not just GFP, but the volunteers like myself, to better downtown, and we would like to continue to make downtown a place where people want to come to and visit and do business. You know, I know we're no big companies down here, but you know, we're the downtown, we're what make the city what it is. You know, it'd be a sad thing to see if they don't get their funding and all that hard work goes to nothing. That's all I have.
Next on the list is Eric Zuberbuehler.
Good evening, Council. My name is Eric Zuberbuehler. I'm with Integrity Financial Services in the Exchange in Freeport, Illinois. I'm here today to speak about the successes of the Greater Freeport Partnership and ask that you consider fully funding the partnership to their original budget. I was serving cookies and hot cocoa this weekend at the annual missile to walk. I hope you all were able to make it downtown to see what a great event it was. I kept a tally of the people that came through our door, and we exceeded over 400 patrons. This is just one of the many successful events the GFP has organized this year. It took a long-running event in town and streamlined it, making it easier for businesses to be successful during it. Five years ago, at the city's urgent, five different groups were consolidated into what is now the GFP. Five years ago, we had a number of burnt-out leaders in our community who ran these groups to the best of their ability, mostly without pay. That metal led to a non-concentrated direction. These groups' efforts were often come up short of expectations. Those defeats would lead to the person in charge stepping down, and someone with more energy would step into that role, and the cycle would repeat. Five years ago, the people in your chairs urged these leaders to consolidate. They dreamed of what our town could look like after five years of an organization like this. It is my assumption that the people in your seats did not see the momentum stopping there. It is my assumption that the dream would have been to hire more staff and increase the budget at the GFP. Keep the momentum going and make this town what it, all of us know it can become. To continue to ratchet down the city's contribution to this public-private group is the city of Freeport ratcheting down their stake in the development of this town. Your citizens are looking at you to come alongside them in their donations and their volunteer reference, not to do the bare minimum or even less so. Let us not forget the other three quarters of the budget of the GFP comes from grants and the citizens of Freeport. We, as business owners, have not only invested our dollars into this town, but our blood and sweat. I ask that you continue to do your part and fully fund the Freeport Partnership.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, City Manager Boyer, and all of our respected city officials. My name is Mike Martin. My wife Kaylee and I are the proud owners of Mort's Bar and Grill here in downtown Freeport. Mort's has been our family business and a local mainstay since 1984, with my wife Kaylee and I being, leading the way for the last eight years. I also serve on the Board of Directors of the Greater Freeport Partnership, and my wife proudly supports her red jacket as an ambassador. Tonight, I'm here to voice my support for the Greater Freeport Partnership, not just as a board member, but as a small, local business owner. In today's ever-changing economy, the world of technology, operating a small business is no small feat, and one feat that I soon realize is not done alone. Since taking over in 2015, I've learned over and over again the benefit of riding the waves of ebb and flow. Besides change, the other thing has been constant: the continued support system provided by our local business community and the Greater Freeport Partnership. The tools and insight provided by the partnership have ensured me that I'm not in this alone. The connections I've been able to make through the partnership and its functions have allowed me to garner new relationships to not only grow my business, but also network with other progress-driven people to find ways to boost our local economy and sense of community. I believe that the opportunity to learn from a diverse group of community-driven volunteers and entrepreneurs has bestowed upon me a large sense of pride in being from Freeport and Stevenson County. Being proud of where you live, work, and play can directly influence positive local action and progress, which can be very infectious. Now, as a board member, and speaking of progress, yes, there's always more work to do, and I look forward and am not afraid of the path ahead to work with all of you and anyone else that steps to my door at Mort's or in any boardroom. With that said, I'll conclude my comment with an African proverb that I find very compelling: If you want to go fast, go alone; but if you want to go far, go together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And then we have Rocky Zuberbuehler.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Rocky Zuberbuehler. My son and I have the Integrity Financial Services, and we operate the Exchange downtown. Been in Freeport 30 years. We've been, I've been a financial advisor here for 23. My office previously was at the corner of Lincoln and West. And not being a native here, but loving Freeport with all my heart, I can tell you that when I talked to my clients recently, the atmosphere has, or the whole speaking has just changed dramatically. When I was at Lincoln and West, there was a bit of hesitation for some people to come to Freeport, whatever the reason was, and a little negativity, you know, and you try to sell them on that, and you get through all that, but in the last year that I've been downtown, it's a total change. Everybody comes in and is so excited for Freeport, they're just really excited. And I put a lot of that on the GFP because of the events and their direction and everything. My son also, he leads a business group and new people starting out in business, and he directs them all to the GFP. He thinks it's a good starting point for people starting their own business, and they lead them on a path of how to go about starting up your business and sustaining yourself. So I see a lot of great things coming from the GFP that I would really hate to see this process just stop dead in its tracks, and then we have to reinvent the wheel, we have to bring people on board and start the whole process again. We literally lose years when that happens, and with our projects, we were totally invested in city Freeport, and we want to see it to continue to thrive and get better every day. So, big supporter of GFP. Thank you very much.
And then we have a few that are non-agenda items. We'll move on to the next, which would be Paul Ren... Hmm. Yeah, there you go. You would like to speak for three minutes?
Good evening. My name is Paul Duca. I'm the Senior Director of Solar Development for Amoresco. I have over 18 years of experience in developing energy projects on landfills, just like the one we're going to be talking about here in Freeport, but also in Illinois and across the country. Amoresco is before you this evening to request a variance, zoning variance on the Freeport North and South solar projects. My colleague, Don Fisher, will provide you with some more specifics about the project, but I'd like to take this time to introduce you guys to Amoresco so you know who you're dealing with. Amoresco is a U.S.-based renewable energy company that was founded in 2000. We develop, own, operate renewable energy assets, like our proposed solar farm here. We have over 100 employees in Illinois alone and 1,600 worldwide. One of our specialties is developing solar projects on environmentally problematic properties such as landfills and brownfields. Currently, we have over 50 megawatts of solar projects on landfills in Illinois alone and over 100 megawatts throughout the United States. All of our projects follow the above-ground wiring design concept for which we're seeking this variance from the council. This design is an industry standard for projects on landfills, and the I E P A has already reviewed, approved, and permitted our design for the Freeport landfill projects. In addition to our solar portfolio, we also develop, engineer, construct, own, and operate landfill gas projects throughout the United States. We have extensive experience on landfills, and we're a trusted leader in this field. As part of this project, Amoresco takes pride in developing partnerships with communities it operates in. Through this project, Amoresco will be able to bring several well-paying jobs to the community. So you're aware, this project is part of the Illinois Climate and Equity Job Act. This assures that projects like these not only benefit the environment, but also the communities they operate in. This act requires a certain percentage of its workforce to be made up of equity-focused populations, and we, Amoresco strives to exceed the minimum requirements for this approved, for the approved apprentice and training program for equity-focused populations, which includes low-income persons, dependents of displaced energy workers, minorities, and other key demographics. Further to introduce ourselves into the community, we have recently joined the Greater Freeport Partnership and committed to providing a community partner-level donation to the organization and looking to collaborate with them moving forward. As you know, the ZBA and Planning Commission recommended to approve these, our variance requests, last week. We're here to request your approval for the variance for the poles located on both Freeport North and South solar projects. The variance is both necessary and appropriate for these projects because they're cited to be located upon closed landfills, which require a unique design that cannot comply with the zoning code current underground wiring requirements. Again, the specific design that...
Paul, your time is up.
Yep.
Yeah, your time's up.
(laughing) That's all right.
We'll let your partner have her three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Don Fisher. I am a Director of Solar Project Development with Amoresco. I'm also a mechanical engineer and have 25 years' experience in energy efficiency and solar projects. As my colleague Paul stated, the ZBA and Planning Commission recommended to approve our variance, and I would like to summarize some of the evidence that was presented at the hearing. So this type of project is exactly why your zoning code provides for variances. Unlike other projects, a solar energy system located on a landfill creates specific design constraints, which require the variance that we are requesting from the city. In order to protect the integrity of the clay cap, the insulation must be completely above ground. Keeping the insulation above ground protects the workers, community, and environment from the potential releases of gases that can build up from decomposing waste below the cap. For these projects, the solar modules will be installed on concrete blocks, and instead of being underground, the wiring between the panels will run in cable trays approximately two feet off the ground. The use of overhead poles is necessary as the pad-mounted equipment used for other sites in the city would require significant excavation and digging through the cap and into the waste below. This type of soil disruption would be unpredictable and dangerous as the depths of waste below the surface are not precisely known due to its age and outdated technology that was used during its closure. The pole-mounted equipment that we are requesting is an industry best practice for landfill sites. So in addition to the approvals from the ZBA and Planning Commission, these two projects have been reviewed, approved, and permitted by the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency. This project is the highest and best use of the land and aligns with the city's comprehensive plan, which states, "Utilize the city's sole smart designation to attract development to the city and connect innovative energy generation sources to development and redevelopment opportunities." It also supports the state's renewable energy goal to cite projects on landfills, which have a higher economic value and community benefit. These projects are also a creative and responsive way for the city to realize revenue from an otherwise unusable parcel of property. Again, Amoresco has over 100 megawatts of solar projects on landfills, all of which follow the same design concept. We are a trusted leader in the field, and we have copies of the public comment from members of the commission and requests that one be submitted as part of the record. Thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Eric Borneman. I'm an attorney for the law firm of Hinshaw &amp; Colbertson, and our firm has been retained by Amoresco to assist them with obtaining the zoning variance before the council this evening. Paul provided you some background in Amoresco. Don gave you some details on the specifics of the project, and I'm just going to walk you through the legal standards for approving a variance. There's a lot to cover, so I'm just going to jump right into it. First, what is a zoning variance? A zoning variance is the council's approval of an exception to the requirements of the zoning ordinance based on the unique circumstances of a specific project and its location. Here, the ordinance at issue requires all industrial solar facilities to install their electrical wiring below ground. Amoresco is asking for the council to make an exception to that rule because this project is located upon a landfill, and it would be unsafe and against industry standards to bury electrical wires in a landfill. This is different from a zoning text amendment, which would ask the council to approve the use of the land in this location. This land is already zoned for this type of project. We're just seeking this special little exception to allow us to bury wires consistent with industry practice. So to be granted a variance, Amoresco had to go through a process, which your ordinances have. It starts with submitting a written application, and then, following that, the ZBA holds a public hearing. Now, just want to mention that variances exist because the strict enforcement of the zoning code is not always in the best, community's best interest. Here, again, there's a specific need for this exception because of projects on a landfill. It's the perfect example of why variances exist. So at that zoning Board of Appeals hearing, what's important to note is that notice was sent out to that, of that meeting, to all adjoining property owners and neighbors. It was also posted online and in the newspaper. This project, or in this request, it should be noted that nobody came to object or raise concerns at the hearing. And then at that hearing, Amoresco was required to present evidence in support of the factors that must be met to approve a zoning variance. The ZBA heard the evidence and determined that Amoresco met all 13 factors that must be met, and they have recommended that the city council approve this variance request. Following that, the Planning Commission considered the same evidence, and they found that the variance was consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, and now it's before the council for you all to make it either approve or deny the variance request. Again, the evidence is in support of this request, and there's really no reason not to approve it. I wanted to point out that I know staff was initially concerned that this, approving this would mean that any other future project, solar project, would then entitle them to this same variance, you know, set a precedent. But I can assure you that is not the case. Under the law, the specific circumstances for a variance request must be considered. Here, this project is located on a landfill. I can assure you that no current project and no future project, other than this one, is going to be located on a landfill, and will need this variance as Amoresco does. So we thank you for your time and ask that you approve the variance request.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Schneiderman. My family and I live at 755 Santa Fe Drive. I've been the treasurer of the Greater Freeport Partnership since inception five years ago, currently the President and CEO of State Bank. We have a one-branch bank located over by McDonald's, Country, and Culvers. As you can imagine, State Bank has a tremendous vested interest in the economic health of our community in Stevenson County. We're very proud to do so. I'm here to discuss the fiscal year 2024 budget and the $25,000 proposed funding cut to the GFP, which will not only lead to reduction in services, but unfortunately, a reduction in private business contributions to the partnership. Without the full commitment of our city, our partners who financially contribute to the success of the GFP will be at risk. I know because State Bank is a major contributor to GFP. One reason we are so committed is because of the commitment of the city that's happened since inception of the partnership. More commitment, I think, the city gets, the more gives, the more commitment we get from our private businesses. I am grateful and proud of the communication that occurred between the GFP, the city manager, and the council over the past week and a half. That would have been a major crisis and a lose-lose for everyone. Although grateful, I'm still disappointed the city feels they need to cut the partnership funds by 25,000 and to do so less than 60 days before we start a new fiscal year without any tangible or measurable reasons. The city's original pledge five years ago was 450,000 per year. The city reduced funding $25,000 in 2022, now proposing another 25,000, which leads to a $50,000 reduction. Keep in mind, the first cut came without any reduction in our commitment or deliverables to the city. I'm going to reiterate what I said a minute or so ago. Without the city's full support of at least 425, we are risking private business commitment. Also, as a reminder, GFP was the city's idea. Frankly, I believed in it 110% from the get-go, as long as we have the city's commitment. We all did that together, and I do believe that most in this room still believe in this concept. I do. I'll leave you with this. We all agree the agreement between GFP and our partner, our partner, the city, has to be modified. It's been five years, and as expected, a lot has changed with the council, with COVID, local economics. However, do not cut our funding by 25,000 just for a quote-unquote "win." Let's work together on the new measurables and tangible goals in the future, then reconsider your partnership giving for fiscal year 2025, and let us know how we're doing by the end of Q3. Give us some time. I have faith we will all be rewarded accordingly. I also want to thank you all for your service. I know it's a tremendous burden to sit on city council. I know on behalf of myself, my family, everybody at the bank, we're very grateful for what all of you guys do. Thank you.
And then the last on public comment is Larry Finer. The last on public comment is Larry Finer? It's your signature?
Uh, do you know why I must have signed up as an attendee? I apologize.[1688.11][1688.11](laughter)
Speech.
Do you have another board member present that you'd like to do that? Have you reviewed them? If that's appropriate, would we use that sign?
Well, the next one on the list would be Doreen Rogers.
My name is Doreen Rogers. I'm a retired business owner and currently the President of the Friends of the Freeport Masonic, a not-for-profit organization. We're a group of volunteers from within the community working alongside the masons to restore, preserve, and improve the Masonic. To meet that goal, we offer events and activities of interest to all. We're members of the Greater Freeport Partnership. The resources they provide to businesses and organizations has proven to be invaluable. Members of the GFP are all-in. They're easily accessible and always willing to share their knowledge and experience. They go above and beyond to help one another succeed. For example, sharing our events on social media, posting our flyers, including us in their advertising, putting us in touch with those able to offer financial support, and even offering to sell our tickets in their businesses. These are all things beyond the scope of what the city is able to offer us. Our events and activities, as well as those offered by the GFP, draw people in from all over. Those same people generate revenue for the city. Gasoline purchases, shopping locally, staying in our hotels, eating at our restaurants, visiting other area attractions and such, all have a direct impact on our local economy. The historic Freeport Masonic... The historic Freeport Masonic has always been the focal point within the community. It's also home to the Children's Dyslexia Center of Northwest Illinois. As Friends of the Freeport Masonic, our goal is to see it remains for future generations to enjoy. With the rising cost of utilities and maintenance and the reduction of rentals, it's no secret they're struggling to keep the doors open. The GFP is currently working with them to help them find ways to make that huge building and auditorium cost-effective. It's not just about bringing people in, it's also about wanting to give people a reason to want to stay. The partnership is made up of many working parts, but they're all directly tied to economic development. Every action taken by them has been done purposely, thoughtfully, and effectively. When a car runs out of gas, it isn't going anywhere, and it certainly isn't moving forward. Let's give them what they need to continue on this journey. If the partnership ceases to exist, a significant number of businesses and organizations will be negatively impacted. The last thing that any one of us want to see is another empty failed enterprise in Freeport. Please don't let that happen. Enable the Greater Freeport Partnership to continue doing what they do best by renewing your contract with them. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration.
Okay, that concludes public comments. The rest that have signed up, you are welcome to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. As for now, we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and acted as one motion unless there's a member of the council who would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there anything, council? The consent agenda consists of approving to receive and place on file the board and commission minutes from the liquor commission dated October 5th and the 12th of 2023, the police department and fire department report for October 2023, the housing authority monthly written report dated October 18th, 2023, and the Freeport Partnership report dated November 15th. Also, there's the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $1,121,563.98. Also, the payroll for pay period ending November 4th, 2023, in the total of $604,957.05. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Clem. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Item number five is the second reading of ordinance 2023-52. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending sections 1042.23 and 1042.27 of the codified ordinances pertaining to requirements of backflow prevention devices and enforcement.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city of Freeport is required by the environmental EPA to have a crossconnection program that contains backflow prevention. Backflow prevention ensures the city's water is not contaminated due to water moving from a commercial location back into the water system. City staff is requesting the ordinance be updated to increase understanding and compliance, as well as give the opportunity for fees to be assessed prior to water shut-offs being conducted. There will be a minimal financial impact to the water customers. Those impacted will be customers that put the water supply at risk of contamination by failing to follow the ordinance. Staff recommends updating ordinance 1042.23 and 1042.27.
Questions? Alderman Sanders?
Yes, Manager Boyer. Are we still doing the sampling testing for the backflow prevention?
Yes, we are. We are continuing.
Is all companies that are dispensing waters back into our system, are they in compliance?
As far as finished water, there's no dispensing of water back into our system. If you're referring to the wastewater side, this is actually covering on the distribution side, so.
Distribution side?
Yeah, only the drinking water side.
Okay, okay. We have a staff that goes out to take the sample test?
That's correct. We have people that do check the backflow preventers and then produce a report.
And what is our lab testing determining that they're all in compliance?
When the inspectors go out to check the backflow preventers, they produce a report to us. We file the report and maintain it on file till the next year.
So it doesn't go directly to the lab technicians?
The lab doesn't inspect backflow preventers. We have contractors to do that for the individual businesses and people that require backflow preventers.
We have contractors that does that?
Yes, they work for the various businesses that they are required to have inspections on their backflow preventers, and those contractors inspect the backflow preventers and provide the reports to the city that they are in compliance.
That's interesting. Okay, yeah, that needs further discussions, so we will note that. We need to bring that up again.
I'd be happy to talk to you about that.
Okay.
Alderman Shadle?
To inspect a backflow preventer, you have to be a licensed plumber within the state of Illinois, and you have to have training and be licensed in inspecting a backflow preventer, so it has to be a private contractor to do that, to have a person with those qualifications.
Well, that may be now, but that wasn't the past all the time, that we privatized a contractor to come in and do the sampling, water sampling. And I don't know if our past councils have been updated to the progress of or any degenerated samples taken, and have there been major reports about our sample, because that's a different entity. I feel that the city should be taking care of his own samples to make sure that no other facility or other companies come in, and then there's a lot of hiccups can cause problems and things are not getting noted. So I would love for us to intervene with that a little bit so we can see what the overall picture looks like.
Alderman Clem?
No, Alderman Shadle pretty well covered it, but being in the HVAC business for years and stuff, the only places that you really see backflow preventers, excuse me, to speak of are in boilers and stuff. And there's less and less of that going on anymore, but I know that it switched to the licensed plumber through the state, you know, many, many years ago.
Okay.
So that doesn't make it right or wrong. The state says that's the way to do it, yeah.
Okay.
Alderman Monroe?
Yes, ma'am. Manager Boyer, so what are the fines associated with this? Basically, it just talks about, you know, any, you know, introduction of the backflow into the water supply and the potable water supply. What do those fines look like? What do those standard typical? Am I missing that somewhere in the ordinance?
The only changes to this ordinance are that the backflow devices are to be checked in the inspection performed by an Illinois licensed plumber, that the inspection report and any other supporting documents or any other authorized designees are in accordance with the rules and regulations adopted by the city. These are just certain text amendments that were recommended by the EPA to update our local ordinances. So for instance, such inspections, report, and supporting documentation shall be supplied to the water and sewer department or its authorized designated within 20 days. I mean, that portion is new. The fire marshal or community development director is listed among the ones who shall be in the loop of information. Also, the fire marshal or community development director is also added to any kind of disclosures or communication chains regarding backflow prevention. So the changes that we're referring to are here within our ordinance that we've supplied with the packet. As far as fines are concerned, I'd have to refer to the ordinance dealing with the fine aspect. This does not address that.
Attorney Zio?
So the current ordinance, and it's in your section, it's paragraph, the last paragraph, C, talks about a fine of not less than $100 and no more than $750 with each day that the violation exists being a separate offense. Yes, so each day that it exists is a separate violation, so yes, it's per day.
And this is not part of the change for tonight?
Correct. It's not part of the change. That's already in our code currently.
Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The ordinance passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item number six is the first reading of ordinance 2023-53. Could you please read this?
Appropriation ordinance fiscal year 2024, which is January 1 to December 31, 2024, for the city of Freeport, Illinois.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Each city fund and department has been presented to the finance committee of the whole at a series of seven meetings that began September 5th, 2023. Attached is the fiscal year 2024 appropriations ordinance. The following adjustments have occurred over the past week and are incorporated into the final document. Staff will point out if any further changes are to be made, they can be made by council for the second reading of the appropriations ordinance. So some of the changes are funding for the Greater Freeport Partnership increased by $200,000 through the Lamb Road TIF. Total amount budgeted for FY 2024 for GFP is $400,000. Slight increase to the city levy amount due to receipt of estimated equalized assessed value, corresponding increase to insurance expense in the general fund. The fire department's safer grant was removed as it will not be received. The capital equipment fund increased for the following items. Live scan software required by the police department, including about $11,250. Drone for the police department, we're budgeting $50,000, and a vehicle for additional nuisance inspector was budgeted at $50,000. Increase in transfer to capital fund, purchase of a five-yard dump truck. This would cover one-half of the cost as these types of vehicles have a two-year lead time, so that would be $118,000. And then the library budget items have been adjusted due to receipt of estimated EAV numbers. The budget has been presented and accepted by the library board. Staff recommends city council adopt FY 2024 appropriation ordinance for the city of Freeport on first reading November 20th, 2023, and second reading on December 4th, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion. Alderman Clem?
If I may, I'd like to take a minute since this comes under the appropriation ordinance. I couldn't really speak before pro or anything on the downtown Freeport partnership, and I'm going to shoot from the hip, so if I make a mistake or say something wrong, please tell me so. First, I'd like to thank all you guys for coming. I'd like to thank you for the support you've shown for Greater Freeport Partnership, especially the people who spoke very good about it. There were very good talks last week when Andrea spoke, and we're saddened that Andrea can't be here tonight. There's a lot of things going on. Keep in mind that you have five new aldermen, four new aldermen and one old guy that hit the palate this year, so there's lots of different ways of looking at things. So there is never been a statement made, that I know of, against anything that Freeport, Greater Freeport Partnership has done, especially in bringing tourism dollars in, throwing events and that kind of stuff, okay? There's been excellent talks in the last week between Rob and Angela, and that's where the talk should stay at, okay? We can all throw our two cents in everything else, and please believe us, we all believe in this, but without economic development, we don't have a thing, regardless how big a city are or how small a city are. Part of the Freeport Township's contract is also economic development, okay? There's a part, one of the parts that we all need to sit down and discuss. Are we all on the same page? Is the city Freeport doing as much as we should do to help the Greater Freeport Partnership? Is there enough communications going on between each other? You know, those are things that I thought of as Andrea spoke, and let's go back and take a look at this. I've seen how many different directors of this, how many different versions of this over the 20 years I've been here, and it's time to take a look. As everybody's mentioned, the contract's five years old. You know, let's take a look and see what we can improve, what we can change on, and what we can make better for everybody. But all of you guys have really busted your butt, all of you, you know? Look at your music on Chicago, all your events. I was down the mistletoe walk. There were lots of people down there Saturday, you know? So the support that you guys give and Greater Freeport gives to downtown Freeport, under those things, you can't replace, you know? You can't go back to zero and throw the whole thing out, but as Larry mentioned too, or not Larry, Chris, you know, part of the issue also may be, as we look at it, as the county looks at it, as whoever looks at it, how much private funding is going into this versus how much public money is going into it. Regardless of how you look at it, $450,000, $425,000, $400,000, it's a lot of money. A lot of streets, a lot of equipment, a lot of people, so on and so forth. And just to give you an idea, when one of the reporters called me up and asked me about this and said, "What are you going to use the $200 for that you take away from?" I says, "There isn't a definite light item that goes to." Keep in mind, when I came on the council 20 years ago, your taxes that you paid every year for your house paid for pensions for the city of Freeport. You know how much we pay now? $4.2 million a year, and borrowed $20 million to make that sound. So as we all move forward as a city, we all like to look at our bucks, but I really appreciate you guys coming, appreciate your support. Keep working on things between Rob and Andrea and the mayor. I believe that's the route to go, and I think we can make a lot of progress. Thank you very much.
Anything else, council? Alderman Sellers?
I would like to say that we're not doing this to hurt anybody. We're trying to do this because we have to make the whole community. I understand, I hear a lot about the downtown, but we have our community development department. It needs support and some help and some finances, and we were just trying to look for a way that we can cut. That's what we were elected to do, is find out ways that we can change and make our community better. We're talking about our whole community. We're not just talking about downtown, and that's for a certain group of people, and I understand it, and I think it's great, you know? But I'm saying, please don't think that we're doing this to whoever said, "Get a victory," because it's not about that, because the victory will come from all of us working together, and that's what it is. It's going to have to be Manager Boyer and Andrea working together and all of us coming together and talking and finding out how can we bring jobs, good jobs, to our community. So we're not doing this to hurt anybody, to downplay. We're saying that you give us something, we'll give you something, but we don't see a big return on $450,000, and the county only gives $125,000. We just saying, hey, we're giving all the money, we want to see more in our community. That's all we're saying. So, you know, I'm not trying to do anything to hurt anybody. We're just trying to do something to make the whole community and everybody see where their money and dollars are going. That's what my reason is. Thank you.
There's nothing more? We have a motion, and we'll move this to the next regularly scheduled meeting. Item number seven is the first reading of 2023-54. Could you please read this?
An ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2024, and ending December 31st, 2024, for the city of Freeport, county of Stevenson, and state of Illinois.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Annually, the city council adopts a corporate levy to help finance city operations under the general fund. We have received the estimated 2023 equalized assessed value, or EAV, from the county. The EAV has increased by $1,132,800. The EAV has increased by $1,132,831 over the last year. Based on this information, the city's levy for 2023, paid in 2024, would be $2,837,000, an increase of $11,886. A house valued at $100,000 would see no increase in the city portion of their property tax bill as long as their assessed value has not increased. During the past five years, the city council has tried to keep the tax rate the same. Staff request city council to move this ordinance forward for the second reading on December 4, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle to move ordinance 2023-54 on to the next regular scheduled meeting. This is discussion. All right, then we'll move on to item number eight, which is the first reading of ordinance 2023-55. Could you please read this?
Ordinance for the levy and assessment of taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024, for the public library of city of Freeport, county of Stevenson, and state of Illinois.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The city council adopts a separate levy for library operations each year. The council also tries to maintain the same tax rate year after year. We have received the estimated 2023 equalized assessed value, or EAV, from the county. The EAV has increased by $1,132,831 over the last year. Based on this information, the library levy for 2023, paid in 2024, would be $1,015,500. The library will see an increase of $9,939.73 in their corporate levy. However, their request for Medicare Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund Unemployment Liability Insurance will be reduced this year in order to spend down prior receipts in these areas. A house valued at $100,000 would see a slight decrease in the library portion of the tax bill. Long story short, the library asked for a small reduction in their, in their portion. Staff request city council to move this ordinance forward for second and final reading on December 4, 2023.
Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Some more.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion. Alderman Clem?
Yes, I'd just like to say and thank once again Michelle and the city manager for the explanations and notes and everything that came forward to help us understand this and change this. It was really very helpful to us, and it was good work by all involved. Thank you.
Nothing else? We'll move on to item number nine. It's customary that when we do an abatement, we do all of them in one motion. So I'll ask, Madam Clerk, could you please read all 10 of those ordinances?
Motion to abate all real estate tax levies for repayment of general obligation bonds. Ordinance 2023-56. Ordinance to abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2013A. Ordinance 2023-57. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2014A. Ordinance 2023-58. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of general obligations bonds, Series 2014B. Ordinance 2023-59. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2015A. Ordinance 2023-60. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2016. Ordinance 2023-61. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2018. Ordinance 2023-62. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2019A. Ordinance to abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2020. Ordinance 2023-64. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2021. Ordinance 2023-65. To abate the 2023 real estate tax levy for the repayment of the general obligation bonds, Series 2022.
Is there a motion to move all 10 ordinances forward?
Some more. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion. And we will move on to item number 10, which is the first reading of ordinance 2023-66. Could you please read this?
Ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the city of Freeport.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to follow up on a couple of things. We discussed this at the committee of the whole. Essentially, this is an ordinance that various communities are, either have passed or are passing, reflecting on some of the changes in the state, at the state level. So I'm not going to go through the memo from last week, but I will add some things to it. The Paid Leave for All Workers Act ordinance that is before the city council is the model ordinance that was recommended by the Illinois Municipal League. As the council is aware, there are many different documents which control paid leave entitlements for all city employees. Collective bargaining agreements control the amount of paid leave and how it can be taken for police, fire, public works, community development, and library employees. City ordinance and the employee handbook control the amount of paid leave and how it can be used for non-bargaining employees. According to the governor, the purpose of the Paid Leave Act for All Workers was to require a certain amount of paid leave for employees in Illinois. On average, the city of Freeport provides 27 paid days off every year, sick and vacation time, not including paid holidays. For a full, for a full-time employee that's worked for the city for eight to 10 years, when you include paid holidays, this number increases to 40 days off per year. This is eight times what is provided under the new Illinois law, which provides up to five days total. The ordinance that is before the council right now does exactly what Mr. Quick is requesting. The ordinance explicitly adopts the city's current paid leave entitlements and adopts those entitlements as the city's applicable Paid Leave for All Workers Act. Nothing in the proposed entitlement, I'm sorry, nothing in the proposed ordinance gives the city the ability to change paid leave entitlements that have been collectively bargained by the unions representing the bargaining employees or by what has already been adopted. Use of the phrase "no less than one day included" in the ordinance is simply a recognition that the city, for any employee group, whether it be full-time or part-time, will never fail to provide paid leave for its employees. The city will provide no less than one hour of paid leave for every 40 hours' work for any employee of the city. For 99% of the city employees, they will receive paid leave far in excess of that minimum required under the law. In terms of an employee's ability to use their paid leave without notice, the act does not state that employer must allow the use of paid leave without any notice whatsoever. What the act states is that an employer shall provide a written policy that contains procedures for an employee to provide notice. The city of Freeport already has a written policy for the use of leave foreseeable or not foreseeable that has worked for decades and has been bargained with the unions. The adoption of the ordinance simply seeks to provide notification that the city's existing policies will be the written policy that the act requires. Section 15, sub, chapter, I'm sorry, paragraph P of the act specifically allows municipalities to adopt their own existing policies regarding notification and the use of paid leave. If the model ordinance was unlawful, it would not have been offered by the Illinois Municipal League, or the IML, drafted by labor lawyers on behalf of all members of municipalities in the state of Illinois and reviewed by our own city attorneys and recommended for city council's approval. So with that, staff recommends moving forward with ordinance 2023-66.
Is there such a motion?
Still moved. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion. Seeing none, we'll move on to, did you have something, Joy?
Yeah, just real quick. I just want to ask, so this is, nothing new we're changing. It's just re-upping what we do, right?
Uh, yes.
It's not changing anything, so it's already what everybody already gets, right?
Yes, it's far in excess of what is required by the law, and it is just codifying what we already have.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Simmons?
So I want to go back to the one day that I questioned at the last meeting. I think with, excuse me, saying that we're going to go by the handbook, which offers way more than the minimums by the state, why not just put no less than the 40 hours that's required by the state in that ordinance?
I think it was just meant to be a recognition to say that we're acknowledging that you're going to get, that we're offering paid leave. Certainly, I don't think it's, if you wanted to put the minimum, mirror the language of the statute, knowing that we give more, but if you wanted to mirror all the language of the statute that says, I think, what? One hour of paid leave for every 40 hours' work, I think it's there. I think that's, you can make that change if you wanted to.
That's what I would like. I know we're going by the handbook according to this ordinance, which is great because that provides more. But with that, no less than one day, I think that should be no less than what's required by the state.
I don't think that's an issue. If the council wanted, was okay with making that change to just mirror that, again, I don't think that's an issue.
Alderman Shadle?
Is that something that can be done outside of contract negotiations on an existing?
Again, we're not changing any bargain contract right now because we give more. The intent of that phrase in the, in the ordinance was just to show that we, as a city, are in support of the fact that we're going to give a minimum, right? We're going to give at least that one, that one day there. We're actually giving, as manager Boyer referenced, you know, we give eight times what the state statute requires there. But it was an acknowledgement that we're never going to go below what the state requires there, so. But I don't think it makes, there's an issue with changing that to mirror the, the language of the statute, if that's what the council wants to do.
So you're making a motion for an amendment?
Yes, please. I'd like to make a motion, make a motion to amend the wording of the ordinance.
To match the, that reference to the one, one hour per 40 hours' work, to mirror the statute language.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have a motion made by Alderman Simmons, seconded by Alderman Sellers, as stated on the amendment. Is there more discussion on that? Yes, go ahead.
Just want to make sure this isn't going to affect the handbook part, that that is what we'll be following what's negotiated with the unions, correct? That's just.
Correct.
Madam Clerk, could you play, take the roll on the amendment only, please?
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
One, two, three, five to two currently, and the amendment passes.
Okay, then unless there's any further discussion, we'll move this amended ordinance over to the next meeting. Item number 11 is the first reading of ordinance 2023-67. Could you please read this?
Ordinance authorizing sale of certain personal property owned by the city. The fire department has a med tech ambulance.
Chief Miller?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. As council is aware, we have two new ambulances on order. We've been advised that we can anticipate delivery of both ambulances on or about December 20th. So at this time, we're seeking to declare authorization through council to declare our oldest, most worn-out ambulance surplus property. And as such, we've been able to negotiate a trade-in value with that vendor that's selling us the two new ambulances, a $5,000 credit. So that credit will, with your approval, be applied towards the cost of the graphics for each ambulance. Graphics meaning city of Freeport on the side, star alive, ambulance on it, and so on. So based on that trade-in allowance and also some credits we received by reducing some features of the ambulance, that will cover the cost of the graphics and even provide a small refund in the purchase price of both vehicles. So we're seeking to make that ambulance available through the ordinance declaring its surplus.
Is there a motion to move this ordinance?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion. Alderman Shadle?
From just past conversation about this piece of equipment, this is a, from what I understand, a pretty substantial amount of trade-in for what they're getting.
Yes, absolutely. I originally felt it had no trade-in allowance, and we had some thoughts about maybe donating it to Ukraine. But being that we can turn this into covering the cost of the additional features required on the ambulance, this makes total sense based on our budget and our, our, you know, revenue sources here.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll move on to item number 12, which is the first reading of ordinance 2023-68.
Ordinance approving a special use permit application at 223 South Chicago Avenue, submitted by Rodell Zuberbuehler Doing Business as Chicago Port Authority to examine the special use of a M1 Limited Manufacturing Business District to allow restaurants, taverns, packaged liquor stores, and any other establishments selling alcoholic beverages for consumption on or off the premises, per section 1254.01B12.
Manager Boyer?
I'd like to yield to the community development planner.
Thank you. Staff received special use application submitted by Rodell Zuberbuehler Doing Business as Chicago Port Authority, LLC, for a meeting hall serving alcoholic beverages at 223 South Chicago Avenue. The property is within M1 Limited Manufacturing Business Zoning District. Per the section 1254.01B12 of the city of Freeport zoning code, states that restaurants, taverns, packaged liquor stores, and any other establishments serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on or off the premises requires a special use permit. This went before the zoning board of appeals on November 2, and was recommended approval by a vote of six yays, zero nays, and one abstention. On November 9, 2023, it went to the planning commission, and was voted of six yays, zero nays, and one abstention. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit.
Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Alderman Clem?
Is there any discussion, or was there any discussion to move this forward, to suspend the rules due to the holiday season or anything?
Not to my knowledge.
I do believe they were part of the, thank you, the mistletoe walk.
No, but I mean as far as they're asking for a liquor license basically in this. And I was asking, do we, is there, was, is there any request to move it forward faster because of the holiday season? Next week, we're going to be into December.
No, sir.
Any further discussion? Then we'll move on to item number 13, which is the first reading of ordinance 2023-69. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving a special use permit application at 1810 to 1876 Southwest Avenue, submitted by V8 Ventures, Beefaru, to examine the special use of a B3 commercial and wholesale business district to allow restaurants with outdoor serving areas, per section 1252.01B10.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to yield the floor to the community development planner.
Thank you. Staff received a special use application from V8 Ventures, from Beefaru, otherwise known as Beefaru, for a restaurant using an outdoor serving area, 1810, 1876 Southwest Avenue. The subject property is within a B3 commercial and wholesale business district. Per section 1252.01B12 of the city of Freeport zoning code, it states that restaurants with outdoor serving areas require a special use permit. The proposed restaurant site is a portion of an entire parcel that is being leased to the petitioner, and the special use requested applies only to a portion of the overall property, which is not being subdivided into separate legal parcels. On November 2, it went in front of the board of appeals, was recommended approval by a vote of seven yays, zero nays, and zero abstentions. It was then moved to the planning commission on November 9, where was recommended approval by a vote of six yays, zero nays, and one abstention.
Thank you. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
Still moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion. A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion? And we'll move on to item number fourteen, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three seventy. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving a variance application at twelve seventy-five South Walnut Road, submitted by Freeport Solar North, to examine the variance application to seek relief from section fourteen seventy-seven point zero eight D, no additional overhead power lines shall be permitted to be installed. If additional power lines are needed for grid connection, the installation shall be underground only for mid to large scale ground mounted solar systems.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to, uh, recognize a community development admin.
I think she, she read off twelve seventy-five. It should've been twenty-five seventy-five by my ordinance. I just wanna make sure we get the right property.
The address?
Yeah.
Did I misread that? I apologize. It's at twelve seven, I did it again. Twenty-five seventy-five South Walnut Road.
I just wanna make sure we have the right property.
Thank you.
Nice catch there, Parker.
Thank you.
Okay, Elizabeth.
Um, I'm Elizabeth Ontiveris, the community development, um, administrative assistant for those who don't know me. Um, and these next two, uh, this ordinance and the next ordinance are exactly the same. Um, so I just, I will be presenting the information. I'm more than happy to present the information on the next, um, ordinance as well, but just keep in mind, it is exactly the same. Um, the project contains two parcels, and so it has to be read twice.
So the, so the difference is just address?
Yes.
What's the address of that one, Dobby?
Twenty-seven oh one, my my.
Twenty-seven oh one South Walnut Road.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
All right. Uh, on October eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Freeport Solar North LLC submitted an application for a variation from section fourteen seventy-seven zero eight D of the City of Freeport codified ordinances, which states, no additional overhead power lines shall be permitted to be installed. If additional power lines are needed for grid connection, the installation shall be underground only. Freeport Solar North LLC submitted plans, which calls for six overhead power poles. They cannot move forward with their building permit until the variation is approved. Staff, um, based solely upon the review of the standards for granting a variation per section twelve forty-two point zero six B of the City of Freeport codified ordinances, as well as the sales and clear factors, staff did not recommend approval of the proposed variation on section fourteen seventy-seven zero eight D, which would allow the petitioner to construct power poles and overhead electric lines as part of the overall construction of their proposed large scale solar energy system. However, on November second, twenty twenty-three, the City of Freeport zoning port of, zoning board of appeals was presented expert information citing correspondence from I E P A and ComEd. There are unique circumstances to the property due to the design of the landfill and the maintenance of the clay cap. The petitioner was able to provide factual evidence to support the unique circumstances of the property. Staff does concede that approval of the variation is, in this particular case, the safest and most suitable plan for this location. Due to the unique circumstances associated, associated with this project and evidence presented at the hearing, staff feels that their initial concern has been addressed and supports the Z B A's decision to allow additional overhead power lines for interconnection purposes, as well as the above ground transmission lines not exceeding the height of the panels. Um, on November second, twenty twenty-three, City of Freeport Zoning Board of Appeals did recommend the approval by a vote of four yays, zero nays, and three abstentions. And on November ninth, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission recommended, uh, approval of a vote by six yays, zero nays, and one abstention.
Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Parker, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion? Alderman Monroe?
So, uh, looking at, looking at the map, there is, it's the area south of the Freeport transfer station, is that correct?
Yes.
Will it be one set of lines going across, or is it multiple sets of lines going across?
There'll be one power, there'll be one line coming across, and then six poles up along the road.
Follow up. Um, since, you know, normally, this would not be something I would be overly concerned about, but the questions that I have kind of come with knowing the areas that we want to develop as we move forward. So I have some concerns thinking that Lamb Road was gonna be an area that was a, you know, a location that we would want to see a lot of business growth. Would this affect that in any way?
Manager Boyer?
Uh, no, it shouldn't affect anything on Lamb Road. Uh, we do have, uh, a project moving forward with the potential lift station along Walnut, and these, these power poles are orientated north and south along Walnut as well. Should not have any effect at all.
One more follow up. Oh, do we intend to, uh, remove any of the growth, the trees, things like that in advance so that we don't have to worry about trimming them later on?
Uh, Alderman Monroe, yes, we'll be, uh, removing hedges and, and brush and so forth, and repairing the fence and that type of thing, so it'll be looking a lot cleaner.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Sellers?
Alderman Monroe made a statement of cleaning up and keeping the brush down, so is that gonna be the responsibility of the city or, or the company?
Uh, Amoresco is taking, uh, responsibility for the, uh, maintenance of the landfill, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Darren.
Back in the back.
Wasn't looking out there.
Just to clarify, uh, Amoresco's deal is to, uh, take care of the maintenance inside the landfill, inside of their new fence. They will install a new perimeter fence. The city would still maintain anything outside the fence. You, you, we had a fence issue this year, and you guys saw us go down and take a, you know, a bunch of brush and trees and things like that out. As part of their construction projects, they will be cleaning up the edge, the front edge of the landfill to install the new fence, to install roads. And the reason you're seeing two different requests is, uh, between the two interconnects, they're large projects, so they need a separate interconnect for landfill two and a separate one for landfill three. So that's what, why there's two, two requests. So there'll be two single lines coming across.
There's no further discussion? Move on to item number fifteen, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three seventy-one. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving a variance application at twenty-seven oh one South Walnut Road, submitted by Freeport Solar South, to examine the variance application to seek relief from section fourteen seventy-seven zero eight D. No additional overhead power lines shall be permitted to be installed. If additional power lines are needed for grid connection, the installation shall be underground only for mid to large scale ground mounted solar systems.
Thank you. And as was alluded, it is the exact same thing, so different address. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward?
So moved. Me and Tom, while we're doing, joy.
Motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion? And we'll move on to resolutions. We have item number sixteen, which is the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three eighty. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving purchase of John Deere mower from Prairie State Tractor.
Manager Boyer?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. The City of Freeport has, uh, quite a few, uh, properties to maintain, uh, for the water and sewer departments, uh, not, not only at the plants, but at various other locations along the Homer, uh, drainage, uh, transmission line. Uh, so from April to November, we typically do a lot of maintenance. The city staff has, uh, completed the process of, uh, uh, doing most of this mowing in-house instead of contracting out to save the city, uh, additional funds. Uh, city staff is in need of new mower, uh, to maintain our facilities and the city-owned property within the city limits. Uh, city staff worked to develop and make, uh, a model specified for the city's needs, and staff received a quote in the amount of thirty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and nine cents to purchase a new mower locally. Uh, additionally, Prairie State Tractor is a source well provider of equipment, which means that, uh, they are authorized by the state, uh, to give a state pricing, um, alleviating the need for three, or two to three competing, competing quotes. Um, then this mower's in the twenty twenty-three budget. Staff recommends, uh, to the city council to approve the mower purchase, um, for our, you know, to, uh, update our current fleet of equipment.
Manager Boyer, can you say again, what's the reason that you didn't have to get bids for this?
Uh, Prairie State is a source well, uh, participating dealer. So when you're participating in source well, you get the state bid. Uh, they automatically give you state pricing on that, so it alleviates the need for multiple, multiple quotes.
Is there a motion to approve this adoption?
Seconded. So moved, second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Monroe. Discussion?
Are we, uh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Alderman Sanders?
Uh, are we, uh, patronizing our own mowing business if there's such a business? I think there may be a John, a John Deere business in place. I'm just wondering if we're patronizing them as well.
Uh, yes, we do that at sales, service, and parts.
They're located across from Cubs.
I know where they are now. I thought we was leaving them out of the, out of the bidding process.
We're, yeah, we're storing it at my house, though.
I doubt that.
Is there any further discussion, council? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
Item number seventeen is the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-one. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving purchase of sequential composite refrigerated sampler from Gas Voda and Associates.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the wastewater treatment plant is required to have specific waste characteristic sampling at a number of locations throughout the facility, uh, due to our, uh, national pollution discharge emitter's, uh, permit. Uh, the B A F building has an outdated sampling system that was installed in the eighties during the original construction of the B A F building, so that's biologically activated filtration. Uh, this unit is not, uh, a traditional sampler and is beyond repair at this time. The sampling unit needs to be replaced with a new sequential composite refrigerated sampler for our N P D S permit sampling requirements. Uh, this is a specialty wastewater sampling unit, and the maintenance team, uh, decided to keep this equipment consistent with the existing plant sampler. So equipment parts are compatible, and additionally, so that operations team has, uh, consistency of sampling. The B A F area is not part of the wastewater treatment plant project. Uh, maintenance staff received a quote for ten thousand seven hundred and five dollars to replace the sampler with, uh, models that are typically used at the treatment plant. The sampler equipment cost can be covered, uh, is, uh, within the, uh, budget, uh, for twenty twenty-three. Uh, staff recommendation, the city council to approve the sequential composite refrigerated, uh, sampler for replacement.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
And item number eighteen is the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-two. Could you please read this?
Resolution adapt, adapting strategic goals and vision for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
The City of Freeport has created the strategic plans to provide guidance, vision, and future, uh, framework planning for the mayor's, uh, city managers, city staff, consultants, and contractors. The city worked with the consultant next level, with Eric Dregney, to create the strategic plan for Freeport, building on previous plans, progress, and to provide the framework for the years to come in twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six. This plan was presented on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, at the committee of the whole. Council and staff worked, uh, together to create a guiding plan and to have a cohesive direction the city can use to direct staff. The end goal is to meet our twenty forty vision statement and deliver on our mission to the residents and businesses of Freeport. Uh, staff recommends the city council to approve the strategic plan from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-six.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion? Alderman Monroe?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, this, this is another, uh, document that I think doesn't go far enough. Uh, the biggest challenge with this is it doesn't set guidelines, it doesn't set numbers, it doesn't set goals that are really measurable for the City of Freeport. Um, it, it's, it's a bit disappointing in, in a lot of ways, and I would've liked to have seen something that marches toward achieving the goals that the city manager, uh, even mentioned. Eight miles a, a year would allow us to achieve in twenty years to replace the roads in the City of Freeport and get us back on track. This document is a document that's just generated for city staff to put on the bottom of each resolution or each, um, uh, basically each ordinance to push through and to say, hey, we're, we're falling in line with the city's objectives, when in reality, it doesn't really provide for a measurable frame to guide us. So it doesn't decrease crime, it just says generally, we're going to improve on decreasing crime. We're going to improve response time for the fire department, whatever department it may be. Really, what we need is a framework that holds people accountable, and I think that's part of the problem that we got into with the Greater Freeport Partnership.
Exactly.
We don't have things to hold each of us accountable in that respect, and I think that's what we need. Um, if, if you don't know how I'm gonna vote on this, um, you, you probably don't understand the sales world. Sales world, you're held to a number, you're held to gaining something, and it's important that we do that in, in public office as well as we do in private office and holdings. I think the G F P does a lot of great things. I think there's a lot of things that we will, um, do to improve the G F P. I think the first five years, we did a lot of good, but I think that we can do a lot more, and that will guide us both back and forth, and I think that allows us to kind of get to a point where we can hold ourselves more accountable. And I see that we've added the eight miles of street into this latest one, and I missed that. I apologize for that. But at the same time, we haven't really gotten to the place that we need to be. And this is, this is why, you know, I think a lot of us think we're spinning our wheels at times, and we change the money from here to here, to there, to there, and it's hard to follow. In the last seven weeks, uh, you know, the finance committee has been a bit challenging, because it's basically just a reading of what the staff wants to do. There's no discussion points, there's no back and forth, a true evolution, because, I mean, if you think about it, from a budget standpoint, we should sit down and really go department by department and talk about why we need these things, how it moves us forward, how it makes us better. And I understand that this form of government is a bit different than other forms of government, but at the same time, um, I, I think my first couple of years on, on the council has been a bit not moving forward as much as I'd like to see. And that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, I think there's a lot of things that could be better, and, um, you know, I am a bit disappointed in, in what I've read about a lot of this.
Um, Manager Boyer, was there something you wanted to add?
A comment on a couple of things. Uh, we did put some, we, the deliverables were actually in the first draft. That was one of the very first things we put in there. If you'll notice on the, uh, economic development, there's also other deliverables that are clear. Um, and I, I appreciate your, uh, desire for specificity, and we will continue to move forward, execute on, um, our plans as we go forward with, uh, additional, uh, specificity. This is a plan for two years, and, uh, as we've looked down at the recent progress section, uh, it does, um, identify what's been done in the last couple of years in terms of, um, completing various goals from the previous strategic plan. So that's all I had, Major, Mayor.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, I concur with, uh, um, Alderman Monroe in regards to the overall picture, because, uh, these types of planning has pre-historical values, and, um, and what he's bringing forth to us now, he's damn near hit it right on the head of, of past discussions and lack of, of other discussions that should've been implemented into this, uh, discussion today. And for, and far as I'm concerned, uh, we have not done enough study, we have not done a, a vision or goal for, from the perspective of the council. Uh, the, the council has not been able to illuminate what our goals are, what's our, what's our objectives for, from last year, from the last, uh, strategic, strategic planning... The council has not been able to illuminate what our goals are, what's our objectives from last year, from the last strategic planning and as of today. And so I concur with him on a lot of things that he has said so far, and I haven't heard anything that even come close in comparisons to what he was speaking about. And I think that we should reevaluate things that we have not discussed, because we have not discussed it as a council, nor have we looked into the future or for best possible options and choices that we should be making. This kind of planning for the citizens, the taxpayers, requires more effort in our part trying to establish where we're going, because right now there is no clear goal here. We know that, because we know that we have not ventured into even with the past planning and to see what the benchmark was for them. We're just going through motions right now with this one planning, because there's no goal, there's no end game for where we're going and how we're gonna set up and how we're gonna move forward. There's nothing that I can see, and I've just been here for only like six, seven months, where the clear goal path is, and we have to examine ourselves and be accountable to ourselves to do justice by the citizens of Freeport. Now, we can ramble on about what we like to do, but that's not setting the goals that we set out to do, and we need more, we need to put more emphasis in our studies on the strategic goal planning and see where the city benchmarks were according to the benchmarks that we're trying to set. And that's what, that's part of my take. I have a part two and a three, maybe a four. But anyway, I'm gonna leave it at that, and we shall venture this agenda again and again, as long as it may take for us to resolve this and get a resolution for the whole council and the people of this city.
You have to remember, Alderman Sanders, that this is why we do this every two years, to keep things updated. In this document, there are eight priority areas that have been identified within the city, and on all eight, there are specific goals, there are specific strategies, and there are specific things that have been checked off. So, not really sure what else you want to do besides setting goals, putting benchmarks, and saying what's been achieved.
Well, I believe in when you have a group of people that are sitting on a committee or a board or whatever the case may be, should have general inputs on past endeavors of not meeting the standard goals that they set out the first time. We don't want another goal post standing up there and we don't meet that goal. And we can't move past that goal, because we have not had a task to talk about it, nor debate it, nor even find a resolution for it. If it's a vision of the city, then I think every person that has something to do with the moving of the goals of the city should have some parts to say about what they think our future endeavors should be like. Not no one or two individuals or whatever the case is, this has got to be a collective kind of situations, and we're not getting that right at this moment. I feel like I'm in an oven with the temperature too low. I'll never bake, you know, if we keep going on like this, so we have to do better than what we're, I don't know if we want to think too hard on it or be real serious about it, but we're talking about the futures of this city. So, we should put in the effort to look forward and revise or do whatever we have to do to make it compliance to the citizens of this city.
Well, just as a point of correction on that, it was not comprised by one or two individuals, it was the entire council.
I'm aware of that, that's just juxtaposed.
And every staff member had input, so one or two individuals, that's not the case.
Well?
So, Alderman Sellers?
Oh, I think Alderman Monroe had his hand up first.
If you had your hand up, sure.
Just real quick, you know, I get that the eight miles of street per year on the key strategies is in here, and it says that approximately three miles of streets have been replaced annually over the past three years. We've put ourselves in significant, significant debt over the last ten years that we're paying back. And I think the question that I'm trying to raise, and it's not a personal attack, I think it's more of just a point, that this doesn't really outline what it would take to get to this. And I think we, to put something on paper and say, hey, I want to score thirty-five points a game, replace knees, six foot four, can't move anymore, to say that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I'm just saying that in general, we aren't talking about the things it's going to take to get here. A lot of communities talk about this, a lot of communities come up with it, but I don't think we've gotten to the brass tacks of what we need to do to achieve these goals. And those are the points that I'm trying to make. It's not a personal attack on anybody, and it's part of the reason why I didn't really, I couldn't attend. One was work, and then to attend a half a day, it wasn't possible. You know, it's a day and a half of doing this, and here are the days. You know, I think it's important that we have a deeper conversation about this, and I think we have to get together and talk more about it, about how we're going to achieve these. You know, I mean, we even talked about a three-quarter percent tax increase, we talked about a one percent tax increase, and we've talked about, that doesn't get us here. So, how do we achieve these goals and move the city forward? And I do, and I think the GFP folks brought up some great points. There is a change in the positivity of Freeport, and those are huge. We've got to continue that, we've got to continue to grow by bringing business in, because we have to create jobs, we have to create a tax base to support our infrastructure growth. And I think we've missed some of the boat on that, and I think bringing partners in, GFP should be part of this, and you know, I don't know if they were or not, that's, you know, that's something that, you know, those are things that are important. You know, look, we're gonna give you four hundred thousand or four hundred and twenty-five or four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, which is the largest chunk of your funding. You know, we've got to figure out how to get there together, and so that we're all marching to the same band director, and it doesn't matter if we've got percussion and we've got trumpets and whatever. We're all on the same tune and we're moving forward, and I think that's my problem with this, is I don't think that that comes out in here. It's just my thoughts.
Manager Boyer? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Alderman, for your thoughts on this, and I wanted to just kind of add to that and say, number one, this is a goal or an aspirational statement of sorts, right? Without high goals, you know, it's hard for, you know, you're not gonna achieve anything. I think you understand that from a sales perspective, right? Whenever you set difficult goals, you may not meet them, but you might get a lot more than you would have if you hadn't from the beginning, right? We call them stretch goals, right? There's someone in this room here that's talking about stretch goals as well. We've done a lot of stretch goals, and we've done more roads with the city crews this year than I believe has ever been done before, and I don't know for sure, because I wasn't here twenty or forty years ago. But I would say that it's because of those stretch goals that we're able to attain, so let's get behind, let's try to do this eight miles a year, and if we don't, if we fall short, we understand. We come up against a hard limit, but let us engage our innovative, creative powers to get as much of this done as possible, and at least council knows we've not only done our best, but we've pushed the envelope on what can be done. So, thank you.
Alderman Sellers?
Yes, I'd like to say also that I agree that these are just our goals that we set around, and everybody, the whole city. But we have to be held accountable to make sure that these goals that are set in our strategic planning are being done, and that's our job now. And I do understand what you mean, that, you know, we're talking, but it's our job here to sit here and say, hey, on one of these, the goal and the key strategic plan, we have to make sure that it's done and it's implemented, and we have to talk about it. No, we're not gonna get it all done today, and these are just some of the goals that the city staff had came up with, and then us as city alder people, we have come up with. So, I do think that we now, we have a responsibility to make sure these are being put in place, and that's our job now. So, we can't sit around and say, oh, they didn't do this. Now, we got the big okay to say, this isn't getting done, and we need to get this done. So, that's what I think from this. I know it's not everything, but that's when we're gonna sit around here and talk and make sure. You don't see something being done? Hey, we talking, trying to figure out, hey, how are we gonna get this done? It's on our plan. And like the mayor said, we're coming back in two years to bring this up, we gonna bring it up and make sure, hey, why aren't we getting this done? So, now we have a responsibility. If this is what we're gonna vote on, and we're gonna say, these are some of our goals and our strategic plans, we have to make sure that they're carried out. That's my belief on these.
Attorney Zito, did you want to add to that?
Well, I just wanted to kind of just state that, you know, a lot of times with these vision and goals, plans, they're to set the goals at a high level. They're not to get into the nitty-gritty detail of how do you actually get there, so like, I guess my analogy is if you're a basketball player and your big-picture goal was to win the championship, you know, become Defensive Player of the Year or whatever else, and those are your goals, you set that out in this document, but does this document meant to get into the detail of, okay, when you go to the gym, you're gonna do so many push-ups, so many this whatever, blah, blah, blah? No, those are the details that get worked out. You know, the big-picture goal is to win the championship, right? But the things that you have to do, that gets worked out at a lower level. Those don't get, you know, enumerated in this document per se typically. These are kind of higher-level guidance documents, and then the nitty-gritty still gets worked out in front, you know, with this council, you know, based off of what staff says. Okay, now to get to this goal, we gotta do this. We gotta go to the gym five days a week, and when we're at the gym, we gotta do this many push-ups, this many laps around the track, and blah, 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 blah. That's where that detail gets in, but that's not at this level document, so.
Okay.
Call a question?
No, we're not done with the discussion, are we?
Well, that's what he just made the motion to, call the question. That means discussion's done.
Oh, who made the motion?
Alderman Clem.
Oh, I didn't hear that. Okay.
So, Madam Clerk, could you please?
Well, my thing is, I had not spoken.
Well, but...
That's my, that's my problem.
Okay, but I, I think...
He made a motion to do that, but I had my hands up to speak. Yeah, I mean, we've been here this long, we might as well conclude it some kind of way and then move forward.
Go ahead, Alderman Sanders.
I just wanted to state that I concur with Alderman Sellers about her statements, her comments, and things of that nature. We're talking about benchmarks and scheduling. This is how we determine where we're at and how we meet our goals, if that's the answer you're looking for. We put a benchmark out there, and then we give it a scheduled time for it to be completed, and that's how we managed most of everything that we're talking about. And because we're not doing it on a lot of jobs that we're doing, we're just jumping, we're just jumping over fences, trying to get this done, this done, and that done. Well, that's not what, that's not what a strategic planning is. Either you schedule it, finish it, it has a time and date that you're looking for it to be finished and moving forward with the benchmarks. That's how we move things, and that's how, and we keep people steady, working to reach those benchmarks. So, if we're not doing that, that means that we're not being accountable, because nothing seems to get done in a timely fashion. And we just can't let staffing and people like that just drag this thing along, and we never reached our goals. We'll never get there. And so that has to be a coordinated effort. If we're not coordinating these efforts, we need to regroup and revise how we go about doing things. And if we're not, and the ones that we put in charge to get these things done, we need a weekly report, a quarterly report, a monthly report on where we stand, trying to reach those benchmarks. And if we're not doing any of those things, then we're gonna be held accountable for what we don't do, you know? And so I need to know that we're gonna have another type of oversight on job performances and things of this nature to make sure we're getting down that path. We don't want another year go through and we have not done anything and have not accomplished anything. And so that's where I'm at. I think that might help, help in such, in certain ways, and just what we need is people to really roll up their shirt sleeve or their pants or whatever, so we can get down in the dirt with everything else that's going on. I think we're just being councilmen and not raising enough hell about the accomplishments we're making, so.
I'd just like to remind the council of the training that we had about the best processes to move forward, and we all stood in the center, and we all had those dowel rods, and the instructor told us to try to balance that on our finger and to look at our finger and try to balance it. It was impossible, couldn't do it. And then she said, balance that dowel rod on your finger, but look at the other end of it. Much easier task to do when you looked at the other end. And her analogy of that was, if the council continues to look at the finger, you can't get anything done. What she meant by that was the day-to-day stuff. You'll never get anything accomplished. But if the council looks at the other end and looks at the vision, the goals that are set out there, much work can be accomplished. So, you have to remember the purpose of the council, the purpose of the staff. Staff is day-to-day. Council is the visionary to look further into the future. So, where are we with this resolution? Are we ready to take a vote? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons? Parker?
Yes.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
Sellers?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
The vote is currently five to two. That is enough to adopt the resolution.
Item number nineteen is the adoption of Resolution 2023-83. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving agreement for brokered electricity service for new well and water treatment plant.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Freeport has recently completed well number eleven and wellhouse number eleven. The city cannot add these facilities to the current electrical aggregation contract, so staff is requesting to create a new aggregation for this facility. The city is working with Rock River Energy Group, Mike Mudge, to provide a brokered electrical aggregation cost to the new well and water treatment facility at Field Circle as this treatment facility becomes more heavily used in the city for city water production. This is comparable to all the other city utility facilities aggregation contracts. However, this new facility cannot be added to the current electrical plans, resulting in an independent plan as required at this time. Due to the unique fluctuations in the electrical aggregation market daily, rates cannot be locked in until the day of acceptance by the city or Rock River Energy. It's staff recommendation to City Council to approve moving forward with Rock River Energy to provide rate aggregation for the new well and wellhouse. And attached or provided is the kilowatt-hour prices for today. Obviously, these won't be the same tomorrow, but as you can see, there's a bit of a spread. You have Constellation Energy at nearly seven cents a kilowatt-hour, Dinerji for about five and a half cents per kilowatt-hour, Santana at seven point two cents per kilowatt-hour, Clean Sky at eight point six, and AEP at sixty cents a kilowatt-hour. So, by authorizing this, you are authorizing staff to lock in at tomorrow's lowest rate for the aggregation contract. That should save us somewhere around a thousand dollars a year in electricity rates compared with our current rate structure, come ahead.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion? Alderman Monroe?
Manager Boyer, so we've heard time and time again here in the City Council chambers about solar. Have we looked into that for these types of facilities?
Currently, we have a solar array at the wastewater treatment plant that feeds the wastewater treatment plant through our Safari contract. It might be a new name now, they do tend to change hands. So, we are doing that at the wastewater treatment plant, currently at our site at Berger... Uh, currently at our site at uh Burge Hill, there's really no real estate for an additional solar uh project, plus it's surrounded by foliage. So uh that's something we could look at. We do have two outlots um flanking the plant, but we wanted to purchase or have those uh for future expansion required by the EPA if necessary, so.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Monroe.
Yes.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Yes.
State, I'm sorry, Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
Item number twenty is the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-four, could you please read this?
Resolution approving Neptune software agreement.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the city of Freeport has remote read water meters throughout the city. Neptune is our software supplier for the meter collection system. Uh, the city decided to use this vendor when new meters were installed during the Big Four project in twenty-ten. Our current contract expires November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three and requires a renewal purchase order. The city has an annual maintenance and software cost for the water meter collection system which relies, or I'm sorry, requires updates and upgrades annually. This service includes technical support, quarterly software updates, firmware updates and maintenance to the gateway collectors located around Freeport. Uh, the system collects the data from the meters and transmits the water account information to the billing system. Staff received a quote in the amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred and one dollars and eighty-two cents from Ferguson for the software and hardware maintenance and support. Ferguson is the supplier of the Neptune system that was selected when the meters were installed, therefore kinda locks us into the uh software provider. Um, and it's staff's recommendation to City Council to approve the Neptune software contract for the next year so that the city continue to uh operate remotely through the uh remote read um meters.
Thank you, is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion, Alderman Sanders.
Um, Manager Boyer, uh how long have we been using this software?
Since twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve? And it's been updated ever since then?
Yes, every year.
Every year? Um, how much does this software cost in the city?
About thirty-two thousand dollars.
You just gave me a headache.
I might, I might add, um, so with the remote reads, the concept here is that uh overall, it would save the city money long-term due to the fact that we don't have to have physical, you know, inspection of all the meters every month.
So uh we haven't looked into any other kinda integration with the, with software, have we?
We have.
Have we?
Yeah.
And we can't do no better than that?
Uh, well, uh, there's an initial capital cost of something like uh two hundred dollars per uh meter interface unit, which is the, the radio that uh connects with the uh nodes all over the city that take the reads. So there would be a large capital expense over and above the software contract. Um, so we did a pretty in-depth uh review of this whole thing about two years ago. And the next best case, it would have cost us about double uh what we're currently paying, so. Because of all the changeover in the, the hardware and then the software program, so. Uh, it's one of those things where a decision was made in twenty-twelve and we really have a, we have a choice to either renew it at thirty thousand dollars or we can go to a totally new system, uh replace all the ten thousand MIUs in the city and then uh pay a slightly lower maintenance cost, so.
Okay.
It, it probably, it, it, I recommend.
I, I just wanted to make sure that this software is very competitive, especially on the market. Uh, whether we, whether this software has been competing against other software uh institutions where they can lower the cost because we, we have been into this, this software interchangeable for decades and we should be able to search it out so we can look for more, you know, different update software. I know there's gotta be some out there.
If I could just follow up on that point, uh, the hardware that we have
Oh.
Works directly with the software and I, there's no other software that works with the hardware.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
So it's uh, yeah.
Okay, well, now that's.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
Sellers.
Aye.
And Clem.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
Item twenty-one is the adoption of Resolution twenty twenty-three eighty-five, could you please read this?
Resolution approving Fairgram engineering agreement for contaminated soil and groundwater testing at wastewater treatment plant, second round.
Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the city of Freeport's Phase One wastewater treatment plant improvements project is moving forward. Fairgram completed the first round of additional soil sample analysis at the facility. Further contaminated soils were discovered through the lab analysis study with parameters that exceed limits for uh project worker safety. The city and engineer are still in the discovery phase and another round of testing is needed per I E P A guidelines for evaluating needed environmental cleanup. Uh, due to I E P A regulations for contaminated soil protocols and to minimize the cubic yard quantity of soil needing to be treated as special waste, haul off to a designated landfill, the engineer needs to perform vertical drill, rig, uh, rig drilling to uh different levels prior to the site excavation to establish the base for total uh removals of contaminated soils on the project. Due to the amount of the quantity of contamination recorded and the limits exposed by lab samples, a professional worker safety plan will be required to be uh developed to ensure workers are notified of the limits and proper pe- uh protective, or personal protective equipment protocol is used to protect the city of, of Freeport um at this project site. Furthermore, with the number of grid soil samples not meeting clean debris standards, I E P A will require an added uh T C L P soil waste characterization study at the U V uh building uh construction. Groundwater sampling and testing at the site from various points of water table is also needed due to contaminations found. These water samples, or these water lab samples will determine if the site groundwater needs to be treated prior to release to the stream or if pre-treatment systems are needed. Uh, the city of Freeport has an overarching responsibility obligation to clean up all the discovered contaminated soils and groundwater to the I E P A standards and guidelines. Uh, the additional soil testing services and groundwater associated testing can be provided for twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars. It is a state requirement for Freeport to complete the environmental testing and clean, uh cleanup at the site. It is the staff's recommendation to the City Council to move forward with these additional soil vertical grid testing and groundwater matrix samples in an effort to continue discovery and determine the plan uh modifications required for the uh cleanup of the site. And I, I just wanna add, uh, this is uh somewhat, um, well, I would say it's very old. Uh, this is older contamination and during um the days before the wastewater treatment was built, um, this was probably the, the best way for them to dispose of certain waste safely, right? Back then, we didn't have the EPA and we didn't have uh a lot of good understanding or what to do with various types of waste and due to the industry here in town, uh, they picked reasons, maybe they used uh some of this waste to uh build up the site as, as fill. So I would recommend um that uh council be judicious in their questions as there are uh potential implications to this. Uh, we really do not understand the full scope and we'd like to ascertain that before uh we, we get too far down this road. So uh if you could be, be thoughtful about the questions that we propose right now uh until we understand the scope of what's going on.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion, Alderman Sanders.
Uh, yeah, um, I heard about the drilling part of it all. And my thing is uh the land itself of the waste treatment plant, the scope of it and the depth that they're drilling and the table of the plant at the measurements of the, as opposed of the, well, I'll put it like this, the comparison with the river and the plant itself. Have we determined the depth of the river and the depth of the uh plant to determine whether or not we're creating a problem when it comes to soil sampling and drilling and testing to make sure no parts of the material from the plant is seeping into the uh, into the water? And, and that's one thing I wanna know, have we gotten to that point yet?
Sanders, we are uh still in the investigative stage. However, it will be handled in a way that will not impact the uh waterway in any way.
Okay, okay, okay.
Any further discussion?
I, I have a question.
Uh, Alderman Simmons?
Okay, just 'cause I'm confused. So we agreed to do the sixteen thousand dollar additional testing. With that additional testing, there was more contamination found?
Yes, with the uh, the first round of testing, it requires us to do a second round of testing to deeper depths to, to understand the scope of the issue.
Okay, so my question then is, is this to then still try to avoid having to, what we were trying to avoid with the first round of testing, having everything taken to a certain site? Or, I mean, like, so if the second round of testing proves that there's not further contamination, then we've got, we're in the clear and we don't have to do that? But if it does, then we may still have to do that, but we, we're fifty thousand dollars in already?
So, yeah, our preliminary sampling showed that we had certain waste present that we believe at this time can go um to a specific site in Winnebago. We do, however, do not know the full extent because those samples that were taken were not, went down to about twelve feet, as I recall. And we need to go down deeper because we did not hit clean soil at twelve feet. So we have to go back and go down deeper to find out how much farther it is. So this, this is basically so it can define our scope, to figure out what we need to do, then we can formulate a plan and then we'll come back and we'll discuss what, what the recommendation is going forward.
So either way, we're gonna have to dispose of it as though it's contaminated, but we're trying to figure out how much of it?
Yes, how much of it's special and how much of it can go to existing landfill sites? That's really what we're trying to determine. None of it could be, um, the, the project, um, none of it can actually go to us, just a standard site. All of it's gotta go to some kinda process.
Okay.
Alderman Monroe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So, uh, Manager Boyer, are, are, are we confident that we know at least in the horizontal, the area covered? I see one shaking no, one shaking yes.
Anything? Uh, Darren, do you wanna go ahead and answer that?
So, so you're talking horizontally with depth or are you talking with?
Just, you know, how wide of an area are we talking about?
So we're confident that the largest portion of the excavation is what we tested uh with the first agreement and uh that was uh completely covered with uh every sample but one was um considered special waste. Um, and so um in order to define the quantity, now we have to go deeper because we went to twelve feet, but our excavation for the headworks, um, due to the way EPA requires waste coming into a wa- uh waste facility, we're down to about fifty-five feet for the excavation for the headworks. Now, we never hit cohesive soil down to our twelve-foot sample, which means that site's been significantly filled over time um with something or another, right? So we had glass and bricks and things like that come up within the fill. But to that expansive, uh, because of the test samples at the headworks, the UVs in the back uh where we discharged to the river, and so we also have to test that sample uh due to the worker safety uh uh plan that we have to put together. And a T clip is a waste characterization of a composite. So you take a little bit from all the locations and put it together. And so that as a whole is just special waste, so that's, that's good. But in order to meet our regulations, we now have to test everything that we haul out and we trying to quantify that before we get the contractor moving. Right now, we have ordered a standstill on the job because we wanna get this defined before we start digging up everything in sight. Um, which, um, the, since the contractor's on hold, there's a carrying cost of about forty thousand dollars per month for the contractor, so we wanna get moving as quickly as possible to get this defined.
Follow-up, Mayor?
Sure.
So with, with all of that fill, I'll call it fill for lack of a better word, um, leaching becomes a significant issue because it's easier for that product to.
Yeah, so some of the, some of the uh soil contaminants, um, some of them are mineralized, which hang in soil and some of them could be um as VOCs, volatile organics that sink. And so we're trying to determine how deep we have to go, you know, a- a- and they don't keep continuing down in the, in the ground site. Now, fortunate for the plan that we have is we're using shoring, so we're not making massively wide excavations. We're just going just wider than our structures and we're shoring to ensure that we, you know, don't breach the river line or get into the river line. Um, but obviously, you know that the groundwater is significantly high in that area, so uh dewatering is part of the project. Um, that's why we not, we need to do groundwater sampling as well to make sure that we know what we're dealing with. And the gra- the, just go back to the worker's safety plan, that's a, that's a pure uh stance for the city as, as a um notice to everybody that works on the site, so we don't, we're minimizing the risk to the city in future years to come, so everybody that works on the site will have to be notified that they know what's going on and they're using the proper per- personal protection um uh devices to make themselves safe while they're working on site. Um, a- and it goes back to, you know, the dust on the site from uh inhalation and, and uh ingestion because it's gonna be pretty dusty when we're digging up a, a, awfully large site.
Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, uh, with that being said, um, there has not been a determination on how deep that water is as, as opposed to where the dewatering starts and where we determine the, the river water and the dewatering from the, from the ground itself.
Well, we know where the, we know what the, the, I mean, we're working on Hancock Bridge, so we know what the level of the assumed bottom of the river is, right? We've done survey on that. Our excavations are obviously deeper than that because it doesn't go fifty-five feet deep there, um, so.
So how deep is the uh, the plant itself?
The current existing plant is about four stories deep. Uh, now, the existing uh framework of the headworks building and we have to go a little bit deeper for that because uh it's a long story, but waste has to be pumped up to screening facilities. You, you can't, you have to screen it down low now.
Yeah.
You can't pump it before you screen it, that's a, an EPA ordinance, so that, that is one of the reasons that the, the headworks has to be so significantly deep. Um, but, but the existing building on site was built at some time, you know, it's, it's pushing forty-eight feet deep.
Yeah, it's old, uh, is the building sinking at all?
No.
Uh, it has not been tested for uh different uh levels of that building?
Yeah, we've shot it many times.
Has it been propped up at any time?
No.
Not one time?
None.
Oh, okay, uh, well, nah, that's something news to me.
You have to remember those deeps of structures are built on piling.
Yeah.
Right? Um, major piling that's set down in the earth, so they peer pile it and, which is our plan as well. When you have uh soils that are not as cohesive as what you'd find out in Aurora Farm Field, you, you use micro pilings or large-scale pilings to, to hold facilities up, uh, piers that go down to out of the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, I thought the treatment plant had a structural problem at one time in its history and that uh engineers had to come in and do whatever they had to do in order to stabilize the building itself. Now, I may be digging into some old history about that building, but my recollection is, is that that building had a foundation that was not completely stable and some things had to happen by engineers who came in to correct some things and that's the reason why I'm saying after twenty years, um, there's no difference in the change of the building itself and, and the fact that we're digging and drilling around this building, is it uh compromising the building from any kind of uh structural movements and things of this nature? And then uh my, my next one is, uh, it was all due to the river when they installed that building, am I correct? Uh, what, you didn't know that, you probably wasn't around at that time?
I don't think I was born then.
Yeah. I hate, I hated to say that myself.
Manager Boyer?
Uh, just, just aside, just an additional comment, uh, the current headworks is gonna be uh demolitioned after we're done with this project, so.
Okay.
It, it will be not so important as to the condition of the existing head structure unless it relates to complexities with the construction of the new one.
So you see why I went down this line?
Sure, absolutely.
Of, of asking questions in regards to something that uh.
The existing headworks will be abandoned as well as the. The existing headworks will be abandoned as well as the lower levels of the existing headworks building that
Okay.
inoperable after this.
All right.
The, that building has the primaries attached to it, and the primaries will still be in use.
And so what the drilling, uh, are we trying to cut corners on less drilling?
No, sir.
We're trying to go full bore with all of the drilling?
Trying to quantify the depth that we have to go for special waste removal.
Okay.
Um, that's the key here, because special waste removal is very expensive per cubic yard. So we're trying to quantify how much material is going to have to be hauled to a special waste site. We're trying to quantify it also to a dollar amount because obviously, we're gonna have to go back to the, uh, EPA and request more funding for the project because this is gonna be over and above our contingency amount on the project. I can tell you that already. Uh, it's significant, and there's a lot of material that's gonna have to be moved.
How about the elevation, how about the...
No, actually, that, you're getting way off topic. We gotta, we gotta get back on to, we're, we're talking about groundwater testing.
Yeah, I just wanted to know real quick, um, you had talked about the, the drilling and the dust. That's not getting into the air till...
No, these are very small drillings that we will do for this testing. They'll be, you know, maybe like two, two-inch, three-inch in diameter. They will not be large drillings. They're just depth drilling. So in order to get down that deep, the first ones we did, we did, you know, like, uh, small machine hand auger type stuff. This will actually be a drill or rig, like a well, to try to get down that, that deep. Um, um, and, and that's why the cost is what it is. Again, um, I guarantee you that if we shopped this out, this price would be two to three times what our price is. We're trying to keep it low and cost efficient for the city and get it done as, uh, completed as quickly as possible to get that project moving forward. Because again, we all know there's carrying costs to having a contractor sitting and waiting.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the agreement? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker? Oh, I'm sorry. Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to zero.
Thank you. Item number twenty-two is the adoption of Resolution twenty-two-three-eight-six. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving the payment of an invoice from the Kahoy Group regarding well number eight temporary pump equipment rental.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, the City of Freeport had numerous, uh, well eight pumping systems issued in late twenty-twenty-one and early twenty-two. If you all remember, uh, about, I think it was November of twenty-twenty-one, uh, well eight went down with a, uh, bad pump and motor. Um, these pumps, uh, the, what we did in the meantime was install the temporary pump, and the temporary pump was leased to the city while we ordered the equipment and be prepared for the repair on well eight. So when that happened, uh, we were pumping, we ordered the equipment. It was on order, very long lead times, and then, uh, well number nine went down. So we had to leave that pumping equipment in, in place, then repair well number nine, which was repaired. And then several months later, we went back and finished the repair on well eight as all the equipment had, uh, arrived. So city staff contracted with Kahoy Pumping Service to perform emergency work on well eight after several pump failures were experienced. One of the emergency pumps, uh, pump pole was completed. Uh, the emergencies were more significant than anticipated. Uh, this well issue required renting pumping equipment, uh, while the city, uh, pump was being repaired and rebuilt. Uh, it should be noted, the city water system was also having issues with well nine at the time and still constructing well eleven at the same time. So daily water supply was of great concern. The situation was deemed a water emergency since supply chain issues were greatly affecting, uh, the times during the pumping equipment parts, uh, in the industry. Uh, Kahoy Pumping Service provided an adequate rental equipment for well eight to produce water to the distribution system safely. Kahoy's team, uh, has made great efforts to support the continuous well operation and provide excellent emergency response times to the city. Staff negotiated the final rental cost. Kah- Kahoy provided a requ- uh, requested credit that the city and engineer team feels is a fair at this time. After a lot of evaluation, they had sent various invoices, and we had to kind of go back and say, well, wait a minute, we had this go wrong and that go wrong, and this is why some of the things were related to their performance, not, but not everything. Uh, city staff has evaluated and agreed to the, uh, pump rental costs and the amount of thirty thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars from Kahoy Pumping Service. Uh, this emergency expense, uh, came from the utility budget. Uh, staff recommendation, uh, to the city council to approve the Kahoy, uh, pumping services invoice for the emergency system rental.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders is absent at the moment. Sellers?
Aye.
And Clem?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted seven to zero.
Six. One, two...
Thank you, six to zero.
Department head reports, Finance?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to report that the finance department received, uh, requests for proposals for actuary services for the next five years. Um, they were received last week. They have not been tallied yet, but they will be on the agenda our first meeting in December.
Thank you. Community Development?
Just that I'm currently working on updating the Fair Housing Ordinance to give it more substance and be more inclusive, and a language assistance plan to help anyone who has trouble with English.
Wonderful. Um, Public Works?
Quick update, uh, we're finishing up road projects for the year. Um, the city crews actually finished, uh, today, uh, with some ha- paving on Hancock, so their paving will be wrapped up for the year outside patching. Uh, Bradmar in town, the wa- the main water main, uh, the new water main, excuse me, is fully installed. We've started on services, um, probably be two to three weeks installing services. Uh, reminder to the residents that are not connected to get their plumber lined up to, uh, do the private side. Uh, Ridge Street, uh, is completed, other than some dirtwork around the new sidewalks that were installed. Where Public Works is working on new landfill contracts for twenty-twenty-four, and also the, uh, master service, uh, contract for twenty-twenty-four, which will have it, uh, towards the end of December. And I'll take any questions you got on any projects, but I think we've wrapped them up pretty good.
Alderman Shadle?
Are we gonna get Bradmar paved yet this fall?
We are not going to pave Bradmar this year. We made a decision with the, uh, lateness in the fall, and plants are closing, um, actually, the last day of civils production, I believe, is tomorrow for asphalt. And, uh, we don't want to rush the product and have problems with it. So it is going to stay gravel for the winter, and then we will finish it as the first project in the spring with new curb and, uh, and the two layers of asphalt. We've notified the residents in that neighborhood that that was the plan. Uh, we've asked Fishers to, uh, continue on install of the, uh, surfaces, but try to do some cleanup efforts to get as much of the gravel as possible off the streets. It, it, it's gonna be a rough ni- uh, winter in that neighborhood, but, uh, um, be assured in the spring we'll have a nice new road. Uh, the last thing we want to do is, is pave it and have issues or sinks, uh, uh, from the excavations o- o- over the winter.
Thank you.
Alderman Sellers?
I do want to say that I have driven down, um, a couple of the streets that have been paved, Lincoln, Chicago Center, um, so I want to just say, oh, and a little bit of, uh, down on the end of Empire, right?
Yep, a couple blocks.
Yep, so I just want to say thank you, and I think the people are seeing something being done, so they, um, thank you also.
So one more comment I'll leave you with, because, uh, I was working on this for, uh, City Manager Boyer today. Um, so we put a list together, which I'll share with you at a later date, but the streets that the city's paved in the last three years equated to eleven and a half miles of paving that we've completed between contract and in-house. Um, that does not include Adams because it's not paved. It does not include Pearl City Road that will be paved in the spring, and it did not include Bradmar in town, which will be, again, paved in the spring. So what I wanted to point out is where we don't all travel all over town, you know, together and get on every street, there has been significant progress in the last three years, and more than I can remember of paving that's been done within the city limits. And a lot of credit goes to our partners between Hellman, Fishers, and Martins that helped us. But, uh, another big, uh, uh, congratulations goes out to our city crews who are really making a difference in getting that mileage up and making it more affordable for us to get done.
Thank you. Fire?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Thank you. Police?
Nothing from the police, Your Honor.
Thank you. IT?
I just wanted to let everybody know, the last two weeks, the Comcast feed didn't go out. We troubleshooting that with Comcast, and it should be all better now. Um, if that ever happens in the future again, you can go to the city website and view the meetings on YouTube.
Thank you. Manager Boyer, was there anything that, uh, you had for library?
Uh, no.
Okay, then, uh, City Manager?
Uh, just wanted to say thank you for everyone's patience with leaf season. As, uh, as, uh, Mr. Stinkle just mentioned, uh, we just finished up a couple of the last, uh, paving patches. We've been, we had crews out, varying numbers of crews at varying times. Uh, however, now that we just finished up our last utility patches, uh, it should be all hands on deck for the leaf season. And as soon as we get that done, or get that mostly done, we'll be doing potholing. So just please be patient with us, we will get there, and we will get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. All I wanted to say was, um, just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Uh, enjoy time with your families. Uh, Alderman Monroe?
Agree with that, Mayor, thank you. Um, you know, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Uh, remember, don't drink and drive. It's already been put out by, uh, both the state police and the county sheriff's department, and I'm sure our city, uh, officers will all be busy with DUI watches. So, uh, be smart, don't do something crazy and ruin your holiday. Also, as far as, uh, the roads go, great job, uh, South Greenfield. Um, you guys are doing an awesome job with the paving. Um, and I'm more than a little bit surprised that the patch that was put near my house held up to the garbage truck. That's what I was...